Okay, we should be good to go.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Lisa Costa-Sanders, I'll turn the presentation back over to you.
Thank you. Lisa, do you want me to try to share my screen? So now I'm having technical difficulties with Zoom. I think I have to log off and log back on. I'm not sure what I did. Let me see if I'm able to share while you're doing that. Are you able to see the presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'll go ahead and proceed then. It sounds like Sarah Cudano, you confirmed we're back online?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening. The item before you tonight is to consider recommending the city council adopt the transportation significance criteria. For this project, the city retained two consulting firms, Placeworks with Steve Noack to advise on the SEQA policy and implications, and Mark Spencer of W Trans for public consult analysis. The item was considered at the May 19 Transportation and Circulation Commission meeting, with the commission voting to amend the criteria as proposed to be adopted. I'm now going to turn it over to Mark Spencer, who will walk you through the presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And I'll just queue you up when I need to advance the slides. So we started off, we had several objectives with this transportation criteria. And I'll go through what the purpose is and where we landed on all of this. We started off, we wanted to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, streamlining the SEQA process, focusing on planning and environmental issues affecting urban infill development, and reducing the need to prepare certain EIRs where appropriate. And these are very focused because all of this, I'm sorry, advance the slide. It all stems from SB 743, which was enacted several years ago. And this legislation set into motion a series of changes in draft SEQA guidelines and also transportation technical advisory from the Office of Planning and Research that has led to what we now know as VMT, or vehicle miles traveled, being the standard metric that will be used to evaluate transportation impacts as opposed to what we have been using for the past 30 to 35 years, level of service and delay. Next slide, please. So establishing a vehicle miles traveled baseline, or VMT, so this is a term we're going to be using over and over again. We researched, working in conjunction with Placeworks, various sources. A-Bags Plan Bay Area, looking at their changes in employment growth projections, as well as also residential changes throughout San Carlos, as well as the region. We looked at CCAG's travel demand model. They have forecasts prepared for 2040 buildout. And we drilled down and eventually figured out that the service area population for San Carlos is currently about 27.6 miles per day. The service area population is both residents and employees within the city. Next slide, please. We took a look at the projections, where we are today and where we're likely to be with the general plan buildout. And what we find is that with the buildout and the changes that you see before you in the presentation, the number of vehicle trips is going to go up because our population, our service population is going to go up. But the per capita VMT is actually projected to decline ever so slightly to 26.7. And so that's the baseline that we're going to be looking at when comparing future projects. Where is it compared to existing VMT and where is it compared to a future VMT? And these numbers and these projections will be regularly updated. And I'll talk about that as part of the presentation as well. Next slide, please. There are different project types that we had to look at. I'm going to go through some of those here, and then of course, be able to take any questions. In the staff report, there's a little more detail. And following Lisa's staff report, it's actually a copy of our technical memo that we prepared that provides the detail and backup on all of this. So small projects. Significance criteria should include an exemption for projects that would be expected to generate fewer than 100 daily trips. That's consistent with general plan land use designations, if they're consistent with general plan land use designations and zoning code. 100 trips is a fairly typical threshold. OPR, in their statewide guidance, said projects that generate fewer than 110 daily trips should be exempt from VMT analysis and considered less insignificant. We're recommending 100 in San Carlos for a few reasons. One is consistent with traffic impact study guidelines from CCAG and several other communities. And so when we're asked and our fellow consultants are asked in the Bay Area, what are we recommending? For consistency, 100 trips per day is a good threshold that we use for when a traffic operations analysis or other types of analyses are needed. Next, the map screening thresholds for low VMT areas. There are transportation analysis zones. These are basically block groupings. And some of them have lower VMT characteristics. And OPR said, you know, those should be exempt if they already have low VMT characteristics. In San Carlos, a lot of these also already have single-family residential homes, you know, whether it's a little bit away from downtown or up in the hills. And in these instances, what communities have been recommending and what we've been recommending for San Carlos is using a half-mile walking radius threshold. Next slide. Want to show you what this half-mile looks like. So within a half-mile of high-quality transit. The map that you see before you, the yellow shaded area is a half-mile walk shed of high-quality transit stops. There's a red dot. It's really small. It's kind of hard to see. That is our Caltrain station. So that's kind of the node that we look to. The other blue dots along El Camino, which is, as you can see, State Highway 82. Those blue dots are bus stops that have high-frequency transit, not just, you know, one bus every hour or two. But under normal Samtrans routing, you would see a high-capacity bus coming every 10 or 15 minutes, something with higher frequency. And if you're within a half-mile walk shed of that, you would be typically considered to have a less insignificant VMT threshold because you would be more drawn to using a higher percentage of trips on transit than you would by single-occupant automobile. Next slide. Residential projects. Significance criteria should utilize VMT per service population as developed from the model, the CCAG's travel forecast model. And we need to keep establishing and checking what those thresholds are on a regular basis. We know right now what the threshold is. We want to make sure that continues to get updated. But all residential projects should determine those VMT estimates for that project using home-based trip assessments. This is a lot of technical talk on how traffic engineers like to talk into these things. But basically, we're going to evaluate every residential project on its own merits and then take a look at what its potential for VMT is. These include projects, whether they're within or inside or outside of that half-mile transit threshold, we want to make sure we evaluate these. I will say why there, in a minute, why there's exemptions. Even if you're in that half-mile zone near transit, there are still reasons to check projects, particularly those that generate over 100 trips a day. Next slide. Office projects. The significance criteria should use the VMT service population for the county as developed from the county's model. Now, city traffic engineering staff should work with CCAG in developing what the threshold should be. This is something that CCAG is currently working on. The technical advisory from OPR states that the VMT per service population for office projects should be developed based on an area where nearly all the workers would be expected to live. Okay, so if we're adding a lot of jobs, for example, in San Carlos, where do the folks live? Some will live in San Carlos. We hope to have that job-housing balance. But we have those that will be coming in from Santa Clara, or San Francisco, or Alameda County, or even San Joaquin County. We have to look at where folks live and what those trip lengths will be. So there's still a need to evaluate these office projects based on those merits, but also making sure that we're looking at VMT based on where people live. Next slide. Retail projects. This comes up a lot. And I know there were some questions about this. I wanted to talk a little bit about this as well. We're recommending that retail projects that are up to 10,000 square feet be considered locally serving. And larger projects could be considered those that are over 10,000 square feet. The larger projects should be analyzed for potential VMT impacts. Smaller projects typically are categorically exempt, or they say in OPR text, screened out from preparing a VMT analysis. We are recommending 10,000 square feet. OPR's recommendation is actually 50,000 square feet. They are, and that's a general recommendation regardless of the size of the community. So whether you're a community of 30,000 to 35,000 people, or whether you're a community of 300,000 people, or a million people. They're saying 50,000 square feet is what we should consider local serving. For reference, and why we think it's appropriate that San Carlos use a 10,000-square-foot threshold and for a community of our size, this is what we think is realistic. Here are some examples on the slide of how large certain projects are. So, you know, our OSH is 32,000 square feet, okay? Bianchinis is about 16, and the Chase Bank across from that is about 8,400. Okay, so the bank is less than 10,000 square feet. The CVS around the corner, over on San Carlos, is almost 20,000 square feet. So is the Pep Boys, that's over on Britton and Old County. A Home Depot is obviously going to be a larger format, big-box retail, that's going to be over 100,000 square feet. And this is just kind of give you some scale. A lot of the businesses in downtown are smaller than 10,000 square feet. And they're locally serving, for the most part. Yes, we want people coming from out of town, eating in our restaurants and shopping here. But for the most part, those are smaller businesses and very local serving. And those businesses, if they weren't there and wanted to go to a certain type of similar facility, you might wind up going to Belmont or Redwood City or another community to find something similar. By having it in San Carlos, it draws in San Carlos residents. It reduces those trip lengths, hence the lower VMT for those types of smaller businesses and why they're considered typically considered exempt. Next slide, please. Transportation projects. Transit and active transportation projects. Active transportation being things like bike lanes, transit projects. These are anticipated to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, increase your multimodal transportation networks, facilitate mixed-use development. These should be presumed to cause a less insignificant transportation impact. The intent of OPR guidance and SB 743 was to encourage infill development and to encourage multimodal active transportation. That was very clearly stated from day one, four years ago, and has remained that way. And so in order to encourage that, they want to make sure that things that reduce single-occupant vehicles and vehicle trips of any kind or any length should be considered exempt and should be encouraged. For roadway projects that reduce capacity and repurpose the motor vehicle lane for transit or active transportation. In other words, if you're striping in a bike lane within the existing right-of-way, or repurposing a lane and putting in a bike lane, or even a parking lane and just going from four lanes to two lanes and adding on-street parking, you're not adding capacity. Therefore, that's presumed to result in a less insignificant transportation impact. Next slide, please. Now, this is in the packet. When it's broadcast like this, if it's tough to see on this table because there's a lot of information there. But this summarizes really what I've just been talking about. Different types of land use projects, smaller projects, projects in lower VMT areas, near transit, residential office, retail. The column in the middle is what OPR's recommendation states. And then the column on the right is the recommendation for the city of San Carlos. We pretty much are following OPR's guidelines and tailoring it for the city of San Carlos. That is the intent, and this is what we've been working with staff on for several months. Similarly, for on the bottom, our transportation projects, be them, whether they're transit and active transportation or a roadway project. Again, very much following what OPR's recommendation is for this. Next slide, please. Okay, so that actually concludes the presentation. When we did this for the Transportation Commission, my colleague Steve Noack from Placeworks and I did the presentation jointly. Steve actually wound up being double booked tonight with another meeting, and so he hopes to be able to join us at some point this evening. But, so I'm handling his part of the presentation as well as my own, but since we're the technical advisory on this, perhaps some of the questions are going to come my way, and that's how they were at the Transportation hearing that we had back in May. So I'm going to stop there and take any questions you may have, and hopefully we can move through this. I know there's, in our presentation, we didn't, because we prepared it, it wasn't, you know, staff didn't add the one slide that has whatever the staff recommendation is for the planning commission at this point. But I'll leave that for Lisa to chime in as appropriate, and when appropriate.
Thank you. And yes, through the chair, I can definitely bring up the PowerPoint back up, although it won't be the full screen. It'll be the modified screen, but at least everyone will be able to see it. So if there's any questions right now, we can move on to that portion of the agenda. And then when the questions are complete, I'll bring the agenda item PowerPoint back up so the public comment information can be displayed. Thank you.
Mark, thank you. This is Ellen Garvey. Thank you very much for that excellent presentation. And yes, if there's anyone in the public who would like to call in and make a comment during the public comment period, this is a good time to be thinking about starting that. But first, let me ask my colleagues on the commission, does anyone have any questions of Mark?
Yeah, Mark.
You did a good job.
Go ahead, Don.
No, I just wanted to say, Mark, you did such a good job. There aren't any questions, but I'm wrong.
It's almost never the case.
Yeah. So first, I'll just say, is there a packet page where we have that comparison between the OPR recommendations and where I guess staff and W Trans has tailored it for San Carlos? And if it's not in the packet, could we just get that back up on the screen, please?
I'm looking through at the packet. I think it's on packet page 14.
Okay, because I keep flipping through. I'm not finding it. Let me... Oh, I see. It's in a slightly different format. Okay. All right. Thank you. I just want to stare at this. Yeah, so Mark, a couple of questions. First, I guess, you know, as a good background and orientation of this whole subject, which is, you know, we see the transportation reports, but, you know, it's useful to understand the actual criteria that we're bringing in. So kind of a threshold question, like what problems specifically are we trying to solve here? Like what was wrong with the level of service approach? Like what were the bad effects of that? What are the negative outcomes? And if you can give your general opinion, and then if staff can explain how it's impacted San Carlos. And then what do we actually solve by shifting to this different perspective of vehicle miles traveled? I'd appreciate that.
Sure. And I'll try and give you the brief, succinct version, and then Lisa can mute me after a few minutes if need be. The issue came up and has been coming up for years, and in level of service and delay as a metric is really good at looking at very localized effects. Should we re-time a traffic signal? Do we need to add a turn lane? But unfortunately, what it has also led to is expansion of roadway capacity, probably in areas where it hasn't been as needed. And the more you build it, the more they will come. The concept of induced demand. If you widen a highway from two to four lanes, things don't necessarily get better and people aren't going at a faster rate. Eventually, those lanes fill up too. And sometimes those lanes fill up with people who otherwise would have taken Caltrain, or BART, or a bus. And it's kind of like you're always chasing your tail. So there's been a need and a push in, from a land use and transportation planning perspective, to can we do this better? Can we think smarter? So what we're trying to solve is not throwing a lot of money at more parking and more pavement, but giving people different options. And also encouraging development activity where we have transit nodes. San Carlos is very fortunate. We have a Caltrain station. We have high-capacity transit on El Camino. So we already have assets in place, resources in place that we can take advantage of, and we can even do better. It's also admittedly a way for...
If I could just, I'm sorry, if I could pause you there. So, okay, so that's, you know, reducing overbuilding of roads because it doesn't actually solve a problem. I'm not sure that's ever happened in San Carlos, but how, you know, this seems to be new standards on developers. How does that translate into changes in
Sure.
capacity development?
Sure. So the second part of this is actually, it encourages development in areas where land use and development, land use and transportation should go together. It encourages more development and also maybe incentivizes it in areas that are closer to transit or that are infill projects. It may discourage development correspondingly in areas that would cause more sprawl or longer trip lengths. San Carlos is is in a very good position in terms of where it is on the peninsula and the transportation network it has. And to, I'm trying not to offend anyone who may be listening, but, you know, we're not Stockton, okay? We're not Antioch. We're not Morgan Hill. We're not further away from where the job centers are. It's not a knock against those communities, but there's a lot of bedroom communities that where people have to commute long distances. And admittedly, some of this legislation was designed to say, we don't want to keep encouraging as much housing and development in those locations and just causing longer and longer trip lengths. So it's a very urban mindset that's behind this. That's just what they've come out with, and they've stated it as such. So for developers and development activity...
And I'm sorry, does that mean it's more appropriate for those communities to adopt this than us? Or I might have a hard time connecting?
No, it's really, it's to be applied differently. It's to encourage those communities to get more jobs.
Yeah.
And it's to take the Bay Area inner communities, such as San Carlos, and say, think about your land use decisions and what effects they have in terms of job-housing balance and whether you have an inflow or outflow of jobs, or where your concentration of development may be.
And so is our different circumstance, was that the driver of these differences between the OPR recommendation and the recommendation for San Carlos?
Yeah, the differences aren't that great, and honestly, in overall. But with each community that we've worked with and where our colleagues at other firms have been working with, we want to make sure that it's appropriate for that community, but also consistent with the county and regional guidelines. We're a little, even though this became law and in effect July 1st, that's after some years of delay, OPR said, we're not delaying this regardless of COVID. July 1st, this takes effect. This is now the required SEQA analytical mandate that we have.
Is that right? Because my staff report still calls this draft out of OPR around since '17, but still in draft form? Is that not correct?
The OPR, well, that would be incorrect because the OPR legislation is complete and effective as of July 1st of this year.
Okay. So this is longer draft. This is official.
Yeah, I think that's a holdover from when we presented this in May.
Okay.
Yeah. But it is important to note that this is now in effect, but many cities and counties have not updated their SEQA criteria, their guidelines for preparing land use and transportation documents. So everyone's playing a bit of catch-up right now, with the exception of a handful of others. San Carlos is actually a little bit ahead of the game in terms of, we started this process two years ago in San Carlos. We knew, everyone knew this was coming. It wasn't a secret. But we actually started this and have been working on it on and off since that time. And what we've set up is a recommendation that will be appropriate for San Carlos and will not be inconsistent with whatever CCAG and the county come out with in the near future.
And could you just, is there a high-level summary of what you can say about how you've, like, how have, what we're recommending here tonight, how is it different than the OPR recommendation? Like what specifically is flavored differently? And I'm looking at this side by side, but is there a general theme here or a way to understand this collectively?
I think the two biggest things that we've tailored that are a little different than what OPR says, one is with respect to what they call low TAZs, or areas where you would expect low VMT impact. They actually recommended you have an option of looking at those kinds of zones, which would be like suburban, single-family zones. San Carlos isn't that big. We don't split up San Carlos into that many different zones. Or looking at it from half-a-mile transit walk shed. And that's what we decided to apply here, is we took the half-mile transit walk shed because we have that in San Carlos. We can take advantage of it and take a look at that zone as saying, this is an area where we can concentrate development. And by encouraging it, by making sure that some of the development that will go there could be exempt from VMT impact criteria. It doesn't mean we won't be looking at other transportation operational effects. It still has to go through a transportation analysis, but it's not under SEQA. It's not considered a SEQA requirement. So we don't call it an impact anymore. It might be an effect of the project.
So what I observed, kind of one of the biggest differences between the recommendations was our exemption criteria. So we seem to be looping in a lot more projects than their criteria would loop in, and, you know, and maybe that is appropriate given our average size of retail development. We're not putting up a lot of new box stores now, but you know, what's the impact of that? Like, when you fall under this regime, is that how you end up paying traffic impact fees? And so having a lower threshold means we will drive more impact fees? I mean, is that a way to understand this, or?
No, I want to, I want to separate those concepts for you. Just any project, regardless of where it is and what its size, will have to pay traffic impact fees based on a forecast of how many trips it generates. If a project generates 50 peak-hour trips, it's going to, you know, times whatever rate it is, that's what their impact's going to be. But it might, it's, and then that's out, impact fees are separate from SEQA requirements. This is strictly SEQA requirements. What it means in terms of that exemption, where we're looking at projects that are 10,000, only 10,000, but not screening out those that are between 10 and 50, it's really a nod to the fact that we have a lot of small businesses in San Carlos. And we want to encourage that and make sure that, you know, there's still a way to encourage that without making them jump through onerous hoops. If you have, if you have a small restaurateur who wants to come in in downtown and they're occupying 4,000 square feet, yes, they might have to pay impact fees, but do they have to go through a full EIR and go through, you know, that, you know, the SEQA? That's a very expensive and long process.
So if you do go through the full EIR and that analysis focuses on traffic, like what's the outcome of that? If we're not talking impact fees, like what's, you know, so what, like, what's the outcome of getting a full SEQA traffic study if we're not talking impact fees? Like, you can't do the project now? It's too impactful? Or further mitigation? Or like, what does it mean to go through traffic SEQA? I guess I don't really understand that slice of it.
Yeah. So previously, going through full traffic SEQA, you'd identify a bunch of intersections and roadways and things where potential impact would be. And you would try and mitigate those effects. Also, what's happening now, now the mitigation would change in, so let me break this up briefly into two parts. Previously, we were so focused on intersections and roadways and effects on bicycle or transit facilities. And all of that gets thrown under one umbrella. And you have to mitigate all of that as part of your project. Now it's saying, you don't have to mitigate those things. You still have to analyze them. And the city may, as part of a development agreement, ask you to take care of certain things, fixing the sidewalk or contributing to certain things. Now, because you have a traffic impact fee, and the update to that is going to council at the end of the month, I believe, you are, you're collecting fees for transportation improvements. So you're covered on that side, regardless of the size of the project. That is a separate thing that's happening. But what happens now is you're just focused on this VMT metric, vehicle miles traveled. And if the project is not going to generate a whole lot of new VMT, it's not going to have to jump through and do a lot of other analyses and be required to mitigate things. It's, it still may need to fix certain things, but it's not as onerous on smaller projects. It's really designed to encourage infill smaller projects and not make them have to do as much to get those projects.
I hear that, and I appreciate that, but, I mean, we're taking it from 50,000 feet down to 10,000 feet, so
Right.
we're not making any change to encourage projects. We're actually, you know, saying, I mean, you know,
Right.
you know, it's actually, we're being a lot more inclusive in this requirement, but we're trying to not hit, I guess, the Laurel Street retailer.
Yeah. Now, I'll fully admit that we think, we came up with the recommendation for 10,000 because we looked at the sizes and, you know, what do we see downtown with the restaurants and the shops? you know, what do we see downtown with the restaurants and the shops and things that we have? Honestly, my, my thinking on it is I'm not hard and fast that the 10,000 is an absolute threshold. What I do believe for sure in San Carlos is that there's a difference between local serving retail in San Carlos versus somewhere else. Okay. And that it is good to recognize.
By somewhere else, you mean like REI that someone might drive in from San Mateo for?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I'm thinking that the intent, I'm trying to follow the intent of what OPR wants to encourage. And admittedly, what, what I believe should be appropriate for San Carlos, but, but you guys can tell me, no, that's, that's not wrong. But I've been working in San Carlos a while. So I, I do have a sense, I think. And the idea is we want to make sure that those types of businesses are supported and encouraged, whether it's 10,000 or 15 or 20, but it shouldn't be 50. Okay. Someone who comes into San Carlos and proposes 49,000 square feet because they're just under that 50,000 threshold should not get a whole lot of benefit from the SEQA perspective because they're going to be causing a lot of effects in this small type, you know, community that we have where the effects are going to be very real. And we don't, we want to make sure that they understand that and they actually get analyzed appropriately.
And just again, I kind of understand it. So impact fees are separate, but so we did an impact fee. But then if they are thrown under SEQA, we will get a better understanding perhaps of what to do with those impact fees to actually mitigate.
I think that's a good way to phrase it. It's a more robust analysis and a, and a perhaps deeper understanding.
And what other benefits come from that SEQA analysis?
Well, what happens is under SEQA, you, you won't get a certified SEQA document unless you put through and look at those mitigation measures. And it goes through a public review process and it gets a lot more scrutiny from this commission and from the council. What will happen now of what in theory is if it doesn't go through a SEQA process from a transportation effect, the city and the county still require a transportation operations analysis. Outside of SEQA, there's still an analysis that looks at what's happening with those intersections and those roadways. We're not ignoring them. But now we want to know what the effects are and then we have to decide what to do about it. Your recourse is through a development agreement and also through the impact fees that you collect and how you apply those. And there's a series of projects in the impact fee program saying, these are where we're likely to wind up with issues that need to be addressed. A turn lane, a signal modification, a sidewalk, or whatever it might be.
So it sounds like as a commission, the 10,000 square foot threshold is something we should actually think about, whether that's the right number. And how does that number compare to what other cities around us have done?
Some are looking at 10, some are looking at 25 and others are just keeping 50. Most of the communities in the size of San Carlos, and again, in that, that kind of 30, 35.
Any examples on the peninsula? Cause we are a little unique, I think, here right between big cities.
Yeah. And I, I believe, and I don't think it's been adopted. I think Menlo Park is looking at 10,000, for example. I don't know that it's come up in, in, we had an unofficial conversation in Belmont. And again, that was also 10,000. I don't know where others have landed yet. There aren't too many cities that have actually adopted their VMT policy on the peninsula as of yet.
Yeah. Are there any other of those criterias you think as a commission, we should particularly think through whether they apply, whether, whether it's appropriate for San Carlos?
There's one other change from the OPR that I wanted to point out. It has to do with what's, what's within a half mile of transit. OPR says any project that's in within a half mile walk distance of high quality transit should be screened out and exempt from VMT analysis. A lot of professionals, myself included, across the state are taking a little bit of issue with that. And I'm going to give you a very specific example. At some point, this commission is going to be looking at the Alexandria district plan. And some of that plan, I believe, if not all of it, I have to remind myself and look at the map. Some of that's within a half mile of transit. That project is not a good example of what should be screened out from VMT. That's going to be a lot of jobs. Those jobs are going to be coming from all over. And although they're going to be shuttling people or proposing to shuttle people to and from Caltrain, we need to kind of understand really what's happening within that half mile zone. So what we said for San Carlos was that if a project still generates more than 100 trips a day at that threshold, it still should be analyzed for its potential VMT effects. And then decide whether those need appropriate mitigation to reduce the vehicle miles traveled. And so a project like Alexandria would not be exempt in this case.
Yeah.
And, and so that's a very real example of, of why we recommended that change. It's not just a blanket exemption. It's, it's, you still need to look at it to make sure. And yes, a lot of those projects will be screened out, but not all of them. And certainly not something of that size that's taking into, you know, that, that kind of land use.
Yeah, that is a good example. And, but it's well over 10,000 feet. So you've sold me on that one, but I think 10,000 is something we should think about. So Lisa, Costas Sanders, can I get your opinion on, on how and why we tailored this to San Carlos? And what's your opinion of the 10,000 versus something a bit higher?
Yeah, no, I think we're flexible on what's the right fit for San Carlos for that retail exemption. If you feel 10,000 is too low, we could certainly raise it up to 20,000. I would be concerned of going all the way to 50,000 as recommended by OPR because that feels more like a regional serving retail use in San Carlos. And then I think the most important change that we made is what Mark had mentioned about the half mile walk shed. I, I would still very much like to see us complete a VMT analysis under SEQA for any larger projects. So that's that 100 trip generation threshold. Another example of a project that would be VMT exempt under SEQA is a project in San Mateo that was recently approved and was in the newspaper, had 961 housing units, 40,000 square feet of commercial space. And technically that project, because of its proximity to transit, would be exempt under VMT. So that's just another example. Mark gave one local example as well with the Alexandria proposed development.
Got it. And Lisa, do you have any additional data points on where other cities around us are coming at as far as that square foot exemption?
No, I believe San Mateo adopted very much similar to the OPR recommendations with the larger square footage, but I haven't tracked, I don't believe the smaller cities have adopted yet. So I don't have that information yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Those are all my questions. Very helpful. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mark or Lisa?
Like a little more clarity on when the, the trips, the trips per day threshold would be used. I gather we use the square footage threshold because it's easy. But an objective at the outset of a project, but trips per day seems more logical. So, so when would trips per day kick in?
Would actually be, you know, any project that comes forward, regardless of where it is, it's very easy, very quick to check out what are the potential peak hour trips and what are the potential daily trips in terms of vehicle trips? It's, it's very, our trip generation manual, it's very easy. You look it up and, you know, literally. And in, in one of the slides, we actually showed some of the equivalent, like some of the projects or some of the existing businesses and what size they are. Also in the staff report, we, there's, we included some equivalencies. For example, a single family development of 10 homes, that's about 100 trips a day. And we had some other examples in there of what might be.
13 multifamily housing units or 10,000 square feet of less general office use. We generate less than 100 total daily trips.
Right. So thank you for that. So we had some equivalencies. It's, so the first level of screening, the first thing you can check is, hey, is this thing going to generate more than 100 trips a day? Very quick to answer that. If it is, we know we're doing a VMT analysis with the applicant or the city, whomever's going to be responsible for that. If it's less than 100 trips a day and it's within that half mile of high quality transit, we know it'll be screened out and won't have to do a VMT analysis. Therefore, it would go through, say, an initial study process versus a full EIR. There might be other factors, by the way. I, I focus on transportation. All the other chapters, I guess they're there, but I don't read them. So it's other folks that do that. Okay. I, I deal with the good stuff. So, but that's just a quick screen to, to take a look at what's going to likely put us into an EIR versus say, an initial study in terms of SEQA documentation for transportation.
So if the trips per day criteria captures the projects with a potential larger impact, then that might give us more room to be flexible on the square footage threshold? We don't have to worry so much that we're going to miss something.
Yeah. I mean, we could, you know, you could actually have an equivalency of what would be a, you know, retail project that generates over, you know, 100 trips a day. For example, different retail generates at different rates. Smaller retail generates higher per square foot than larger retail. And by the way, when we went through, you know, TNC, they, they had the same question. And they were asking the same thing. It was actually the, the one point that we went back and forth on quite a bit in the discussion. I'm looking at my notes here on the side, but you know, whether or not that they, the size or whether 100 trips a day is the right threshold, they were actually talking about whether we should use less than 100 trips per day. I talked to them. They, they, they didn't, they weren't consistent on it because they, they weren't, you know, thinking of it. They all had different opinions. And I said, one of the things that will be very helpful for San Carlos or anybody is you want to make sure that it's not too onerous and that you're consistent with traffic impact guidelines and what CCG is going to require and Caltrans or others, so that at least there's some, there's some similarities and you're not trying to create too many different documents for too many different folks. So 100 trips a day is a really good threshold because it covers a lot of different bases and it's an appropriate one, we think as well. But it's not just because it's easy, but it's also a good, appropriate one.
Mark and/or Lisa, I, I appreciate that this whole issue went a couple of months ago to the Transportation and Circulation Committee. And I, I appreciate their review. And Mark, you've alluded to one or two things that they've, that they've talked about. Can you, can either you or Lisa give just a brief summary as to the major comments that the committee had on the proposal? In addition to the one you already mentioned?
Yeah. The, the other major comment was it, it says here, they want to make sure that we were not losing sight of how to do ADA projects and sidewalk connectivity. And they were wondering like, if you screen out projects and you're not doing this analysis and they're not going through SEQA, how do we make sure that we still get to improve our, our sidewalks and our crosswalks and take care of ramps and things that we need to take care of? And I responded at the time, there was, there's, there's two ways. One is that all projects are paying into traffic impact fees. And the projects that are within the traffic impact fee, which is kind of like the capital improvement program list of projects, those include a lot of those sidewalk pedestrian improvements, those types of ADA connectivity improvements. The other is separate from SEQA, we're still requiring a traffic operations analysis that deals with what happens. How are people walking or bicycling or traveling to and from a site? Do sidewalks need to be improved? Do we need to have curb ramps that are improved or brought up to standards? That work is still being looked at and recommended separately outside of the SEQA process. So you're not losing that as part of this analysis. Again, it's kind of like the traffic impact fee versus the SEQA aspects. Those are the, the two major things that I had in, in my notes. There might be, I don't, I don't know a copy of the full notes from the TNC, but those are the two major points that I highlighted in, in my notes that I took that night.
That's what I recall as well.
Thank you. That, that's very helpful. I really liked the, the report. It was really easy for me to read. And I, there was a sentence in there that really jumped out at me. The, the old level of service looked at the impacts to the driver. And the vehicle miles traveled looked at the impacts of driving. And that, that for me, that sentence really helped me understand what is the difference between the level of service and, and, and the vehicle miles and the vehicle miles traveled. One question, and Lisa, this may be for you. When this, when the commission receives projects, one, sometimes the, an element of that project is a transportation demand management plan.
Yes.
I see that plan. If, if we go with a VMT basis of, of, of analysis for traffic, it seems to me there's more of an opportunity for interconnectedness between the transportation demand management plan, which also in its own way links to reduction of greenhouse gases and, and other environmental effects. It seems to me using VMT lends itself to those same goals in a better way than level of service. Can you, can, can you help me understand that better?
Sure. I was trying to look it up while you were speaking, but San Carlos is pretty far ahead actually with our TDM ordinance. Many jurisdictions do not have TM, TDM ordinances, or they have requirements that may become up more recently in a specific plan. And they're looking to add those now. So VMT is essentially requiring everybody adopt TMD requirements. That's really what it is. And so as Mark was alluding to, there may be some projects that if they have a high VMT, the mitigation measures are going to look a lot like things you see in your TDM plans today. Or we're going to have to look at statement of overriding considerations because they're just too large and too far away to from transit that it's impossible to mitigate them. So we're, we're far ahead there and we did take a look at our TDM ordinance. And it is consistent with these VMT guidelines. So we do not need to change it at that time. So I think kind of big picture, projects are going to be required to comply with a few different areas. One, they have to submit a TDM plan and that talks about trip reduction measures. Two, if they're not exempt, they're going to be required to complete a VMT analysis. So we'll look at what that is for the project. So then any project that's doing a VMT analysis, we're also going to have them do what Mark indicated was through old fashioned transportation analysis that looks at LOS. And we'll see if there's other areas we need to negotiate through a development agreement. And then finally, the city is updating more, probably most importantly, the transportation impact fees. Because we're not going to be able to get the mitigation measures that we used to get, like add another lane, fix a traffic signal, those types of things. So that's going to be captured through the transportation impact fee. And the city engineer and the public works department has known about this for a couple of years as well. And so they did that study to be prepared for this implementation.
Very helpful. Thank you. Any other questions from any other commissioners?
I just like to clarify. So if a, a new office building was likely to lead to a backup at a particular traffic light causing congestion, local congestion, we would capture that in the category, Lisa, you just mentioned of the traffic management plan.
Well, we would find it through that traffic study. And then we would, you know, work with the developer to see if there is a way we can negotiate the improvement. If a project is, you know, straight up permitted, it's going to be a little more difficult to get those improvement measures because it cannot be a SEQA mitigation measure. So unless they're asking for, you know, like a plan development permit where we have a little bit more room to get a development agreement, we may not get that traffic signal improvement measure unless it improves pedestrian connectivity and improves the VMT. And Mark's trying to chime in here.
And as you were alluding to, the, the transportation demand management programs and having those required of developments means, you know what? Maybe we're not going to retime the signal or add a turn lane to accommodate that added queue from that office development. Instead, why don't we find a way to reduce the number of trips that office development is generating and say, how can we encourage more of those people to use Caltrain or to carpool or to do something other than just drive themselves? And then maybe we won't have the backup at that signal and we're kind of shifting and providing different options for folks. That's, that's the intent of the, of looking at things from a VMT perspective and also trying to have a TDM ordinance that has some teeth to it where you're, you're finding ways to reduce trips. And that's, those all now sort of fit together in a way that the original congestion management agency language from 1991 did not achieve. It's one of those goals that they set out to when they, when they came on. But that was the intent. Yeah.
So as we increase our assets, I, I think you called them assets, or maybe they were choices. We end up offering more and different VMT choices. And I guess some of these as a city, we could do, like improving bicycle networks or improving pedestrian walkway networks. But other things, the Caltrans could do, they could add a hot lane on 101 or, and, and we could then use that asset or leverage that asset in a VMT analysis for a potential new project. Am I getting that right?
You're looking at, yeah, you're, 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 you're aiming it in the right direction for sure in terms of reframing the conversation to look at things in a different way and making, using your resources in a different way.
Yeah. And another thing we're looking very closely at is, is San Carlos, you know, with all the development interests, may be very close to having a transportation management association so that the business and property owners, say of the, the east side. so that the business and property owners, say of the, the east side, participate and really help that last mile connectivity. Right now, there's a shuttle service that runs from Caltrain to many of the businesses. But it has very low ridership and it has difficulty getting drivers and having participation. So as, if, if more businesses and more employees come to that area, there could be a sweet spot where we can require participation in transportation management association. And that'll help with that last mile link.
I have a follow-up question. So I know, you know, I always like to see existing versus recommendation, right? I see this OPR recommendation versus what we're recommending for San Carlos. And I realize level of service is probably apples and oranges with VMT, so hard to put it side by side, but, you know, what are the side by side comparisons of exemptions? So, you know, uh, you know, is there a, a square foot exemption from our current standard? And if so, what is that? And what are the other exemptions from our current standard? And how do they compare to the recommended exemptions?
I don't think there's anything else exempted that's inconsistent with what OPR recommends.
No, I'm asking about our current code, the LOP code in San Carlos. Do we have a square footage exemption under our current LOS standard?
We do not currently. So we don't currently have significance, thresholds for significance for when a project's exempt for CEQA. We, we need to do an analysis with our CEQA consultant to determine what's the appropriate CEQA document to prepare. And sometimes it is that infill exemption. There's certain criteria that we would check the boxes on. And then other times it may go to the initial study and a mitigative declaration or mitigated negative declaration. And then, as you know, larger projects have EIR. But just that hundred trips was something that I wanted to see the examples of because that does fit a lot of the projects, say the downtown mixed use developments and near transit where we have done some CEQA exemptions. So you've seen some of those thirteen unit and eight unit developments, multifamily residential where we've prepared the CEQA exemptions.
I see. So we can think of this as potential relief for small business in town in that currently they're not exempt from CEQA. You might be able to find, you know, a, a, you know, a, a, you know, a, an easier path for them under CEQA, it sounds like currently. But this is an outright exemption for less than 10,000. Because in a sense, this is somewhat, you know, economic development relief for our small business because before they would have to hire a CEQA consultant for the traffic study and now they don't.
Yeah. So it's an outright exemption on the traffic side, not, doesn't exempt them from the entire CEQA, but the traffic, sorry, Mark. It's usually about half the cost of the CEQA analysis anyway. It's the heavy lift. Yes.
Okay. So that's good. We can think of this as relief for businesses under 10,000 square feet in town.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm open if, if you think that number's too low and if you think it should be something closer to 20,000, we're certainly open to that suggestion.
You guys kind of went back and forth on that a little bit. You know, what would the merits of 20,000 be? How, you know, is that, you know, like what led you to recommend 10,000 versus something higher?
Just based on the size of the local serving businesses in San Carlos and, and the resulting trip generation, it typically, you know.
And raising that to 20, would that, would that loop in businesses that are more regional? I'm trying to think. We have a couple, like Didhams, a little bit larger downtown.
Yeah, it's something I think closer to the size of a CVS, maybe. I'm trying to remember our numbers here.
Yeah. As I think about the businesses on Laurel Street, most of them, I'm guessing, are, are 10,000 square feet. Most of them are not very large.
Right. The B and Knees market, 16,000. So I think Didhams is probably a little smaller than that. And then CVS on San Carlos Avenue is 19,000. So if you were to view, you know, CVS and B and Knees as local serving, then we could raise it to 20,000 square feet. Although Pep Boys, I feel, is a bit more regional serving and that's 18,600.
Most of our businesses, though, are in the low rises in East San Carlos. Do we consider most of those locally serving? I mean, I don't think they generate a lot of trips. I wonder how, what planning's perspective is on that.
Yeah, I think they would be closer to that square footage size and also we'd look at the trip generation, that, that hundred trip threshold.
Yeah.
To, to further analyze if we need to do the VMT or not.
Okay. All right. We can save some of that for deliberation. Thank you.
Yeah. Like, look forward to discussing that when we get to the deliberations as well.
Any other questions?
I guess I have a general question, which is, is this going to raise the bar or make it more stringent for, I mean, there's currently a scale of impact, significant, very significant. I don't know what the scale is exactly, but is this going to make it harder to, to get us, to get a passing score compared to the old system?
I'll answer it this way. For certain projects, it's going to be harder to not have significant unavoidable impacts. I'm going to use, there's a project of, what's it called now? Eight oh three Alameda to La Pogus? Eight oh six? Eight oh six. That's close. Okay. It's single, you know, you look at single family homes, you look where that project is. Very hard to have TDM that's going to reduce a lot of trips. They, they can do certain things. But it's going to be hard not to have significant unavoidable impacts for that type of project. Doesn't mean it's a bad project. I'm not passing judgment on it one way or another, but that project is not well served by transit. And just by its location and the fact of the type of land use that it is. So those projects are going to have a harder time getting through, I think, the CEQA process. Other projects that are going to be more infill or closer to transit clearly are going to have an easier time. There's also, and this has not, I don't want to jinx it, it hasn't come up in San Carlos, and hopefully it doesn't. Our, our firm, we do a lot of work in, in wine country and throughout the Bay Area. And there are projects where the, there's unintended effects of the OPR legislation that are now just becoming, you know, realized. You know, warehousing projects or agricultural products or, you know, things that might have a lot of employees, but they're pretty rural. Those projects, you know, previously in terms of level of service and trips and things like that, pretty innocuous. But in terms of VMT, they show up in a very strong way as having an effect. Those communities have to decide what's an appropriate VMT threshold for that community. And, and the, the legislation is clearly focused, and until it gets revised, it's very focused on infill urban type developments. I think we're going to be okay for the most part at San Carlos and that we're actually going to have an easier time with some, for most of our projects, some not so much. But I think the intent is, is going to serve us well, at least. Sorry, I got the crystal ball.
Well, when we first started analyzing this, we were really kind of looking at that walk shed and seeing, would there be significant development in San Carlos outside that walk shed? And areas that would be difficult to develop are going to be, you know, the other side of 101. Well, it's already impacted by the flight zone and, you know, the freeways. And so unlikely we're going to see any significant new development out there. And then, as Mark indicated, just other projects kind of west outside of that walk shed that were of any sizable, may have some difficulty as well with the VMTs. But all of the smaller projects that we described and projects within that walk shed, we should be able to work on some mitigation measures that would not be significant.
Yeah.
Okay.
By the way, what we're seeing is large residential projects, almost no matter where they are, are having a hard time, unless they're right on top of a transit station, large residential projects seemingly will have a large VMT effect almost, almost anywhere. We're seeing a lot of that throughout the Bay Area right now. And communities have to decide how to deal with that. Mixed use projects, excellent. That's what we want to see.
Before we see if there's anyone in the waiting room who'd like to make a public comment, any, any last quick questions for Lisa and/or Mark before I ask Sarah if there's anybody in the waiting room?
I have just one question left. I just want to be sure these exemptions, you have to mean all of them, right? Like, for example, you would have to be under 10,000 feet and you would have to generate fewer than a hundred trips per day. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think the issue is the hundred trips per day is probably the one that's going to govern the most, but it's, it's not either or, it should be and.
But is that clear? I mean, I was just thinking of, you know,
Is it clear or the or then?
Small projects with big impacts. And it just occurred to me that Chick-fil-A in Redwood City on our corner, my God, that's probably 2,000 feet, but could not have had a larger traffic regional impact, right?
That's, that's an excellent example. I was thinking in my head of what would happen if you put a Chick-fil-A or an In-N-Out, you know, next to, you know, the Caltrain station. Well, I, you know, I don't take Caltrain to go get Chick-fil-A, but I might drive there or go through the drive-thru, right?
Yeah.
That's a lot of trips and a lot of, you know, potential effect. Are they all local serving trips? Well, that, that's why, that's why you need to look at it. And maybe, and if they are, great, that's fine. But if they're not, you really want to be able to deal with that.
But just to be clear, that would not be exempt. It's less than 10,000 feet, but it generates more than 100 trips per day. So they would go to CEQA, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any last questions before we go to the waiting room? All right, Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room who'd like to make a comment this evening?
There's no one at this time.
Well, let's just give this another 30 seconds or so. I know the screen just went up there with the, the phone number. If you'd like to call in and make a comment, please do so now.
So this feels like the telethon moment of our community, you know.
Please call and donate. So we're the cops.
Commissioners are standing by.
While we're waiting, I'll, I want to say thank you for pointing out the, the one thing that I think summarizes all of this at the end of the day is that one comment of changing the analysis of looking at what used to be from two drivers under LOS to of driving itself. VMT analyzes the effects of driving, LOS analyzes the effects to drivers. And taking with the emphasis on two drivers and looking at all modes in a sort of a level playing field is really an important distinction in the intent of VMT.
That's, that's rational and appreciated, but I would point out we're all also drivers.
I, I get that effect. I'm, I'm the chair of the transportation committee in the city where I live and I, I get that comment and I have to balance that quite a bit. So I, I fully agree.
All right, Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room?
No callers.
All right. At this point, I'd, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Dugan will move to close public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes.
All right. We've heard from staff, we've heard from the consultant and we've, we've asked a lot of good questions this evening. We now enter into deliberations. Lisa, just a quick process question. What I believe we are charged with tonight at the commission is making a recommendation to the city council for them to consider at a future meeting on this issue.
That's correct. Thank you.
All right, let's open up the discussion. Who'd like to start?
I'll start. Bradley here. I've been a planner for over 50 years. I've been to every APA meeting in the last 30 years in California. And I've heard a lot of comments and attended a lot of sessions on this very issue. And I strongly support VMT and to use it instead of LOS in the future for all progressive cities. Looks like we're, we're going to have to because of what OPR says. Anyway, I don't see any detriment with making this move, so I support making the recommendation to our city council to adopt this. Thank you.
Don, with all that background and experience, do you have an opinion on the square footage exemption?
Anywhere between 10,000 and 20,000, I think, would, would work. I, I haven't thought that through completely, but 10 at the lowest and, and 20 at the highest.
Well, David Roof here. I also like the VMT measure and appreciate that it takes us in the right direction as far as reducing impact. And so I'm supportive of, of the, of the switch. As far as the square footage threshold, I guess if we increase the number to 15 or 20,000, then we might relieve a business that happens to have a lot of square feet, but really not very many vehicle trips from the costs of having to do the impact assessment, which seems like a good thing. And there's sort of the safety of having the, the, the trips per day. So any business, regardless of size, that generates lots of trips, is going to have to do this. And that seems like the bottom line to me. So, so I would, I would be fine with increasing the threshold a little. Although I have to respect that the city staff has looked at this range of square footage is and the types of business and eyeballed the appropriate size. And so I'd be pretty comfortable with the 10,000. But if we wanted to increase that a little, I'd be okay because we have the 100 trip per day trigger.
I think I'd, I'd echo that as well. Going back and thinking about the businesses on Laurel Street and even many of them on the east side, 10,000 square feet seems a reasonable threshold. Going up to 20 does put in CVS and the bank and, you know, some of the, and Didhams and some of the larger, larger businesses. I, I guess I'd be okay with going to 20,000, but it's not a real priority for me. I'm very comfortable with the 10,000 square foot. And if we wanted to go up, if others felt strongly about it, I, I would support it, but I, I'm not going to strongly advocate for it.
I'll just say, I support the broad change, level of service. I appreciate that. It's all about more road capacity and, and better driving. And unfortunately, we've all chosen to live here. I think we've given up the open road here in San Carlos or in the peninsula. So I think vehicles mile travel is a more rational approach. I think it reaches better results. And, and just because, you know, a large housing project falls into the bucket, it doesn't mean, it doesn't, the housing doesn't get built, from what I can understand. It just means the city has to take a harder look at it and consider those impacts. And personally, I do prefer mixed use development because hopefully someone can go through their day without getting in their car. If they can live, work and play all in the same area, mixed use, that is a better project. So it sounds like this vehicle miles traveled is a push in that direction. So for that, I support it. As I think about the square footage threshold, you know, one concern I have is it seems like a lot of buildings are right at that 10,000 feet. It may be slightly over, slightly under. So, you know, I, I always hate that. You know, it's 10,500 feet and now another whole thing applies. Yeah, obviously, that's just kind of, you know, I don't have a broad survey of data on that. That's just kind of my own personal experience looking at, at properties. But given that anything generating over 100 trips per day is the other trigger, I think I would personally like to see a slightly higher limit. I think, you know, when you think of the CVS, that's a pretty good sized building. But I also don't think we're just sizing for Laurel Street here. I think we're also sizing for East San Carlos. That's where most of our businesses are. And I think if you're a 15,000 foot cabinet shop, but you only get a couple deliveries a day, you know, I would like to see that business exempt from, from this. And I think we have a lot of that on the east side. And I think we have a lot of that on the east side. So I think I would personally prefer to see something, you know, I think like 15,000, I think would be rational. I think that would definitely get the businesses we would want relieved on Laurel Street out of this bucket. And then perhaps cover other low trips per day businesses on the east side. And, you know, this is in the backdrop of our city struggling. Um, our small business owners are struggling right now. You know, you can just walk down Laurel Street right now and see a lot of businesses that have gone dark. Some of our favorite spots have gone dark and others are still struggling. So I think this is the time to be a bit more generous. And setting a threshold of 15,000 allows us to look at that. If that ends up being the wrong number and it should have been 10, well, we certainly can fix that once we have a little bit more data. But it seems to me if you're 15,000 feet and generating less than 100 trips per day, I think that's a good standard. But I do respect the work staff did, but what I heard from staff was, uh, you know, they didn't think 10,000 was a necessary limit and they saw flexibility up to 20 as being rational. So I guess I would put a stake in the ground at 15.
I'd be inclined to also support 15, thinking back to staff's comments on Menlo Park and Belmont, considering 10, but they haven't yet actually adopted 10. It's under consideration. Uh, and given that, as Commissioner Dugan said, the east side has many cabinet shops and those kinds of businesses that may be a little bit large, but not have too many trips a day, I think that going to 15,000 really helps address that issue and I'd support that.
Let me ask the staff. The motion you put suggested here doesn't have a limit of trips or square footage. Do you think the city council would prefer them making the decision than us? Or we should put that on the motion and let them play with it because they have the last word?
Yeah. I think the, the city council would respect your recommendation and expertise in this area. You do see a lot more of these development projects than they do. So I'm happy to amend the resolution based on the recommendation from the commission and take that forward to the council.
That being said, I'll move that the Planning Commission recommend to the San Carlos City Council to adopt the proposed transportation significance criteria and use vehicle miles traveled and eliminate level of service. But that 15,000 square foot is the criteria.
Well, I guess I will second that.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye, aye.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Lisa Costas Sanders. Thank you, Mark Spencer. Excellent presentations tonight. And we really went through a lot of, of material, some of it quite technical. And I appreciate your, your helping us all understand the complexities of this issue. Thank you. All right. Moving on to agenda item number seven, reports, correspondence and general information. 7A, report on recent city council actions.
The only thing that staff would like to report is, most of the commissioners are aware of, the city council recently held a study session on the, on this fiscal year's budget, fiscal year 2021. And that study session will be continued as a formal item at the council where they will consider adoption of the budget and that'll be on September 28th. And that is all the news I have regarding council.
All right. Moving on to 7B, planning commission comments or reports? Any comments or reports from my fellow commissioners?
By our hand, wear a mask, keep your distance, be healthy and safe.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Well said. All right. 7C, correspondence. Anything to report?
There is no correspondence other than the email regarding the correct attachment for the item that was previously discussed, the transportation significance criteria that went out. And hopefully everyone was able to receive that.
Thank you for mentioning that. Yes, I did receive it and I did review it. Moving on to 7D, planning staff comments, reports and updates of current projects.
Yeah. So just as a courtesy reminder, our next meeting will be held on Monday, September the 21st. And on the agenda for that evening, we will, we will be bringing back the amendment to the previously approved PD plan just for the signage portion of the project formerly known as Meridian 25, located on the corner of Industrial and Branston. So that item will be coming back as was noted in a motion, in an action made by the Planning Commission earlier this evening. And then in addition to that, staff will be presenting a general plan consistency finding for the upcoming adoption of the CIP or Capital Improvement Program. So this is a list of all of the capital projects that the city is committing funding towards and will work on at the next, at this upcoming fiscal year. So as required by state law, the CIP needs to come forward for a general plan consistency finding where the commissioner will be asked to make a determination that all of these projects are indeed consistent with the San Carlos general plan. And that would be the conclusion of items for the upcoming agenda. So just those two.
All right. Lisa, thank you very much. And I believe that's it. Thank you very much. And this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Nice work, Don.
Thanks, Mark Spencer. Excellent job. And Lisa?
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Aye.